Good afternoon. It's Monday, October 24th, 2022. At one o'clock, we're going to get started. I do call a meeting to order. We do have a forum here this afternoon and please acknowledge any guests that's here today. And so we're going to open it up to public hearing and we have three requests. One for Ms. Gay Norton, one for Mr. Martin Norton, and one for Mr. David Kelly. So would you all like to speak now or would you like to speak when the item comes up?
When the item comes up, sir.
All right, I've opened up a public hearing. Here, no more, we'll be closing that public hearing. I'm wanting to deliberate and consider action on the following items. Just on moving the county offices located in Newton County courthouse to other locations. And as you gentlemen know, I've been working hard and heavy on the grant. We have got these architect hired, got that contract signed. And so we're moving forward and so we must start looking for other places for people in our courthouse to relocate. So it was just a discussion that I wanted to tell you all what was going on. But we would be looking at other sources and other places to move the people out to. Y'all got one question? Number two, discussing appropriate authorized disposal of two county surplus vehicles. Those two vehicles is in my possession and I would like to put them as a surplus to sale. I make a motion. Most of you made, Mr. Bondi and second Mr. Thompson, that we authorized the disposal of the two county vehicles. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, here none passed. Number three, discussing appropriate to add to the two surplus vehicles to the contract to AuctionExpress.com, previously approved and accorded in August of 16th, 2022. That was where the commissioner had asked for approval to Auction Express. And they've come back and said it wanted to blanket coverages instead of just a precinct coverage and that was made available. I need that approved.
I make a motion. Second.
Most of you made, Mr. Bondi and second Mr. Thompson, that we approved the head of two surplus vehicles to the contract to Auction Express. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, here none passed. Number four, discussing appropriate approved expenditures of ARCA money. ARCA funds in amount to not exceed $800,000 for payment projected payroll due to remainder of 22. Ginger.
Yes, sir. I'm just come to request to those for ARCA funds to finish out the year for payroll. It could be the November and December of this last half.
That'd be only for payrolls? More, you got more to go there?
Yes. It's a little required payments on the paperwork department. And whoever received it back, it is. And that's all that I want to mention, that he's going to be asking.
Most of you made, Mr. Bondi and second Mr. Thompson, that we approve the ARCA funds to not exceed $800,000 for payroll to the remainder of 2022. And it's going to open up for discussion. Mr. Norton, you're first.
Yes, sir. He asked if he provides some of the, we don't do actual checks on check stock. We do direct deposit. And I'm part of a partnership with those slips and our payroll proof register. And then the money that is transferred to those to the bank and the bank statement. And it's already approved with the ones that we did the $300,000 on September. I've got all that together and we emailed all that just morning. Let's go to the attorney. Name this one. And you'd already approved us. That was just a thought completion.
You have to move it, Mr. Norton?
Good morning. My name is Gay Norton. Now, I could thank the court for allowing me to speak today. About a year ago, we began asking some simple questions on expenses and projects. After months of no answers, we began some research. We found proof and documents showing financial status was not evident before our county. We were told by several elected officials that we didn't know what we were talking about. The county has $10 million. Well, seeing the items listed on today's agenda and months prior, I finally see answers to our questions. We should be using this free government money, which is the ARCA funds, to benefit the citizens and our county. But no, the proof is in the pudding. Our county is broke and that money is being used as bailout money to pay bills and payroll. There's your legacy. I would like to challenge every citizen, employee, and elected official to stand up and be a part of a solution or being the solution so that Newton County, our county, can move forward and survive and hopefully thrive in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Norton?
Yeah, thank you, David. Basically, I'm kind of piggybacking off what my wife said there. I didn't know she had that nice little speech all wrote up. But yeah, I am concerned about spending this ARCA money, pay bills. Like I said, we didn't get this finance for shape over that. I mean, it wasn't due to a stock market crash. This has obviously been developing over the course of a year or more. And now we're using this money to bail us out. And I feel like that money shouldn't have been used more directly for the citizens of Newton County. And I'm a little bit concerned because it appears to me that at least two of our commissioners chose not to even be a part of this debate. So that, that kind of concern about what their opinion that is, since they chose not to be here today. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Court, citizens. Since we are on the record, I ask this Court, have anyone of you read ARCA's final report? I've had our county legal expert, the district attorney, as she read ARCA's final report and advises this county personnel. For the record, I have. This Court is basing our use of ARCA funds on lost revenue due to the pandemic. That is already on the record. Can any of you tell me exactly how much revenue Newton County actually lost since 2018? Over 98% of Newton County's revenue comes from property taxes. The base tax paid in 2018 was 6.6 million. 2019 was 7 million. 2020, 7.7 million. 2021, 7.6 million. Actual revenue loss from 2018 to 2021 of 1.35% at $102,296.93. Based on this Court's own justification for use of funds, this $102,000 is the only money that should be used from the $2.5 million in ARCA funds to offset county losses. Wasteful spending is not revenue loss. Our $2.2 million fiscal deficit that this Court created does not fall by ARCA funds to cover. ARCA funds are for the improvement of citizens' lives, not covering expenses you already created. ARCA final rule, page 133. Stakes that may not be used directly for pension deposits, contributions to reserve funds, or debt service. This Court is paying the county shares and employees' retirement accounts directly with ARCA funds. This is straight up illegal use of funds. This Court needs to remember that ignorance is not going to be allowed in defense. We are Mr. Minister.
I'm sorry, County Minister.
Thank you.
Most of you made, Mr. Bondi and second Mr. Thompson, that we approved expenditure of ARCA funds for $800,000 payment for payroll to remainder of 22. Are you all, all in favor of that? You in favor of it?
Yeah.
All objection? Same sign, here none passed. Number five, discussing appropriate approved expenditure of ARCA funds not to exceed $2,000 for payment to the sheriff's office employees for 100 hours of complimentary time approved due to having to fill in as a dispatcher due to shortage of employees in the area of the sheriff's office. Mr. Burby?
Good afternoon. Your District Commissioner, you're in public. You know, after looking at this, the way this is written, you know, at this moment, I like to pull this all here. I had a look at it, there's questions about how. Of course, you pull it off, not sit here.
And the request of the sheriff, he has reserved a right to remove this from our agenda. Number six, discussing appropriate approved expenditure of ARCA funds not to exceed $2,000 for computers for veteran service department. Mr. Ray has done a fantastic job. He gives a report of a month and it's this page after page, page of what he does. And everything has to be handwritten. And we're requesting up to $2,000 by the computers where he actually follows his duties. Is it laptop or tablet? Laptop. Make it motion. Most of you made, Mr. Bondi and second Mr. Thompson. Any discussions? Action to that. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, here none passed. Number seven is discussing appropriate approved request for proposal for solid waste for Newton County. And we, I want to send it out for advertisement in the paper to get to RFPs. Let's see, if embarrassed, I rest.
Make that motion.
Send it out a proposal to private contractors.
Yes. Yeah.
We sent, we sent it out. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we'll be putting it in the paper and the paper, they will notify several independent contractors to send in their proposal for the solid waste pickup here in Newton County. And so there's some stipulations and guidelines in which they'll be sending that proposal in. So Mr. Bondi made that motion, Mr. Thompson, seconded. And so I see, Mr. Norton, you have some.
Yes, sir. I know this solid waste deal, it's a big issue with all the citizens of Newton County. I'm sure it is with all of y'all. I have no idea why the cost has been up so much over the last four, five years. I know it's numbers I say show it's increased tremendously. But I know that is one of the few services that the citizens of Newton County have. I mean, that's it. That's one of the few services that they have. I mean, we cannot cut that service out. I know we need to go with the cost on it. I know we cannot continue to spend the amount of money on it that we're spending. But we can't cut that service out, cannot make the fee astronomical for people to go there. Like I said, that is one of the few services that Newton County actually has to offer for its citizens. I mean, I know way out where I live, I mean, that's about it. So please consider not cutting out that service for the citizens of Newton County. It's very, very important to them and I think if you look and listen, and I'm sure y'all have, it's a pretty, pretty important issue to people out there. But please don't, don't take it lightly, whatever you say.
Enter discussion here. It's, this is only a request for proposal. It's no agreement, no anything except a proposal of what an independent contractor might supply for Newton County. And it may be a free service, but I doubt it. So any more discussions? All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, here none passed. Number eight, discussing appropriate approved bills for October 19th, 2022. And Mr..
Teresa.
General Fund, 137,404.41. District Attorney Stake Fund, $311.65. Road and Bridge General, $1,406.65. Road and Bridge Precinct, 1, 192.18. Road and Bridge Precinct, 2, I'm sorry, 253.14. Road and Bridge Precinct 3, 188.61. Road and Bridge Precinct Soil, 191.10. VA Desert Grant, 49.50. Commissioner's Special Precinct 1, $12,936.65. Commissioner's Special Precinct 2, $16,419.54. Commissioner's Special Precinct 3, $15,007.43. Commissioner's Special Precinct 4, $380.80. Dedicated Road Precinct 2, $312.40. Record Preservation, $33.20. Followed Lane Disposal, $4,488.90. Voters Registration, $81.12. Newton County Library, $263.23. Historical Operating, $435.79. District Attorney Contraband, $14.99. FEMA Grants, $12,000. Rents, $237,252.17 with a grand total of $440,358.24.
In total? I hear a motion.
Make that motion.
Most of you made, Mr. Bondi and second Mr. Thompson, that we approved the pay the bills for October 19th, 2022. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, here none passed. Number nine, discuss with probably approve the expenditure of the ARCA funds in amount not to exceed $200,000 for October 19th, 2022, pay the bills. And this is for the general fund part of what we just approved the paper. Most of you made, Mr. Bondi and second Mr. Thompson, that we approved to pay up to $200,000 from the ARCA funds for the general fund of October 19th, 2022. Mr. Kelly, please, you had a request.
My stance, stance, thank you, Judge.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, here none passed. Number 10 and 11, number 10 is considering a probably accept a 30-day notice to cancel the IT contract with Mr. Conche Enterprise Incorporated. A 30-day notice starting November 1st, 2022 and it'd be null and void until December 1st, 2022. And at the same time, we discussed on the IT service for Newton County, December 1st to December 31st. And we'll be going in an executive session and to talk about this item. And it's branded under government code 555.07182 and 551.074. And this time, if y'all will be excused, we'll be doing an executive session. Page 125. It's one twenty-five.
So, just the matter.
Okay, we're back in regular session. And it's two fifty P M. And so what's the, what is the procedure to call it out of number ten?
I'm making a motion that we accept the IT contract. Counselor.
Motion made by Mr. Thompson, second Mr. Bonby, with adjournment. Two fifty-two.